Olszewski.
Here.
Mr. Postage.
Here.
Mr. Henson.
Here.
Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a brief moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion and a second for approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Walsh, can you call the roll, please?
We'll call Mr. Postage.
Yes.
Mr. Henson.
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp.
Yes.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes.
Mrs. Olszewski.
Yes.
Next, we'll move into public participation. I do have one request, and that is Colleen Stockard.
Good evening, President Lopez, members of the board, and Superintendent Smilick, although we're supposed to call you Charlie, according to Rob, so. My name is Colleen Stockard. I've lived here for 33 years in Pickerington, 17 years as a bus driver. I'm here tonight speaking for the people who keep this district moving, literally. The bus drivers and monitors who open the doors every morning greet your students by name and make sure they arrive safely at school, no matter what the weather. We're here because two issues have been ignored for far too long: longevity pay and affordable quality insurance. We ask you that you hold the contractor you choose accountable and insist that they provide longevity pay for employees with 10, 20, 30 years of experience, service, and affordable quality health insurance for the workforce responsible for getting your students in this district to and from school activities and trips safely. First, longevity pay. We have employees 10, 20, 30 years of service to this district. When there weren't enough drivers, they sacrificed time with their own families to ensure the district was able to provide safe transportation. They've driven through snowstorms to make sure your students arrive safely. They've been here for the wins, the losses, and everything in between. And yet, Peterman Bus has pushed the request for longevity pay for our most senior employees aside year after year. Other districts like Southwest Licking already have a clear, structured longevity pay for senior employees. It's their way of saying, "We value you. We want you to stay here." Too many of our people feel invisible, and we can't keep losing experienced drivers to other districts just because they offer a more appreciation and a more security by recognizing loyalty and years of service. Now, let's talk about insurance. We have employees who transport your kids every day. We can't afford to take care of their own families. Premiums are too high. Deductibles are crushing. Some of our coworkers are skipping doctor's visits and splitting medications just to save money. Many employees don't even carry the insurance, not because they have superior coverage, but because the coverage is both minimal and expensive. When they get sick, they face terrible choice: miss work and leave routes uncovered, or come in sick and risk passing on illness through the whole district. In either case, a doctor's visits and medical costs them so much out of pocket, many avoid it. And I want to say, we lost three employees last year to cancer at our facility alone. This isn't just budget line. This is about respect and taking care of those that take care of the district. It's about saying, "We see you. We value you. We make sure you can take care of yourself and your family while you care for our students." Teamsters Local 284 has offered an insurance option at significant cost savings to Peterman Bus. This solution is on the table, and it's being ignored because Peterman's business model is to offer poor coverage and ensure low insurance participation. Does the district agree with that approach? If you disagree, the district needs to tell Peterman that it should not try to profit at the expense of health and welfare of its bus drivers and monitors. We know budgets are tight. I've lived here 33 years. I always vote for the levies because we need to continue good service, good schools in this district. We know there are competing priorities, but ask yourself, what's the cost of losing the people who know the district best? What's the cost of replacing decades of experience every single year? What's the cost of a workplace that is stressed, burned out, and distracted by medical bills? And what is the cost of continually hiring and training when many of these newly hired individuals leave shortly after their initial commitment is up for better pay and benefits elsewhere? Longevity pay and better insurance are not luxuries. They are investments in stability and quality and in the heart of this district. And I believe that with my heart because I've lived here for 33 years. I care about our schools and our kids, my personal feeling there. And they have been ignored and pushed aside as non-priorities for Peterman for too long. You have the power to fix this. You choose the vendor, and the district has an opportunity to make this right. You can send a clear message. Employee health matters to you. Affordable insurance for workers and their kids matter. Dedication matters. Loyalty matters. The people who serve our students every single day matter. We're not asking for some day. We're saying this is the time now because our students, our staff, and our community deserve nothing less. And that is why today, we voted to strike. We don't want to strike. We want to avoid it. We want to serve our children. We love our children in this district. We do this because we love the kids. We love our children. I wouldn't have done this, we wouldn't do this for this many years if we didn't like what we did. But Peterman is going to cause a strike if it does not provide affordable, high-quality health care and treat its senior, all the employees, with the professional respect they deserve. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and we appreciate your support.
What's that? No, we're not. We just understand that negotiations are going to continue. Sure.
Charlie, I just have one question, and I figure we all probably want to, because I figure people at home are going to ask this, but understanding that they, oh, sorry, sorry. I know we're going to eat this one. Understanding that they've voted to strike, what does that mean to the parents and the students right now who just heard that?
We have three dates still scheduled, 12th, 13th, and 14th. We also have a mediator that's a pretty well-respected mediator in the area, scheduled for August 13th. If we have to make contingency plans, we will certainly do that, but we are optimistic in our attorney and the mediator and the Peterman team that we can reach an amicable resolution. If we have to make updates to that, we will certainly make them at the immediate time that is presented, but at this point, we do have full faith in the negotiating process and believe that we will be able to reach a result.
Thank you.
Hey, Charlie. So was that a 10-day strike notice?
My understanding is it's a 10-day. Of course, the gentleman that was walking out just yelled differently, so I will, I'll get confirmation of that during the meeting and get back to the board.
All right, we're going to move on to our presentation, or presentation, sorry, and that is the Special Education Audit Update. And I believe Ms. Jefferson is going to start.
Hi. Sorry. Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you for having us today to give you this short update on some of the things that we've been working on over the spring and summer, and then our next steps in regards to the Special Education Audit that was completed through K-12 Solutions. So obviously, we want to make sure that everything that we're talking about throughout this presentation directly relates to our district goals and our mission and academic services. This is, these are the things that guide our work. And hopefully, you'll hear in our presentation how we're meeting all of these goals within the district. Yeah, sorry.
Do you want questions at the end or as you go along?
Questions at the end would be great. Thank you for that question because I was able to answer it now, and then we can answer other questions at the end. So, yes, questions at the end would be great. So, in regards to Opportunity 3, what, we started working on that really quickly in the spring after we got the results from our Special Education Audit. And what our audit told us was that we needed to work a little bit more with teachers, with PEA, in regards to teacher caseloads and making sure that we're making decisions regarding staffing that are fair and address the needs of our special education students. So the first step that we took was we did a pilot program over the summer, or I'm sorry, over the spring, where we released the expected caseloads of all of the teachers for each of their buildings. We asked teachers to review those caseloads, give us feedback on how we're supporting students, give us feedback on how we're aligning students in each of the classrooms to make sure that things were a little bit more balanced in regards to our K-4 MD classrooms and also our K-4 ED classrooms. So that process was not mandatory. It was something that each building was decided if they wanted to do that. We gave them time throughout the day during their planning times to complete some of that, and we got really good feedback in regards to categorizing some of the students in each of the classrooms. So that's where we started. Throughout the school year, we were working with PEA in a focus group to really talk about intervention specialist caseloads, piloting different caseload workload documents. The first one that we looked at, we needed to tweak it a little bit, so throughout the year, we just continued to work on those things. So that happened even as early as August when I first started with the district. In the summer, we started working on making sure that we gave opportunities to intervention specialists to be provided with PD in regards to coaching. A lot of the work that we've been doing in the district in teaching and learning was teacher clarity, and we wanted to make sure that those intervention specialists also received that PD, and they really understood what that success criteria is. And that's just looking at the standards and making sure that the teachers and the students understand what our expectations are and how we're meeting those standards. So there was training throughout the summer for that, for all of our intervention specialists, and that goes along with Opportunity 1 that addresses all of our Tier 1 instruction. For Opportunity 2, that surrounds our best practices. So that's adding in extra time intervention for teachers to give to students with that Tier 1 instruction. That opportunity is going to take us a little bit longer to address, but there were some things that we were able to do over the summer to start to address some of those things. So throughout the summer, teaching and learning provided our intervention specialists with detailed PD on what our curriculum looks like. They walked them through it. They walked them through how to create lesson plans to address some of the standards and some of the work that they could do in their tutoring periods, E&amp;I periods, or classroom periods using the Tier 1 curriculum. That training was also provided to our new teachers at the beginning of the month during new teacher orientation, so some of the same things, the training on the curriculum, how to use that curriculum to lesson plan, and address some of the needs of our student group. Now, in regards to next steps, some of the things that we are working on in regards to that Opportunity 1, we are developing, along with teaching and learning, a lot of professional development. We have started creating a academic services PD library where we can give some asynchronous resources to teachers, whether that be Gen Ed teachers, whether that be our related service providers, our intervention specialists, in order to address some of the needs that they may have. We've gotten great information from our EL department already to be included in there and our gifted department as well. And then we have been following up and will continue to follow up with PD for the coaches. One of the things that K-12 said in their audit was making sure that the coaches were able to support general education teachers so that they were also able to support our special needs students that are in our CO-TOT classroom. So there's been a lot of PD around those learning progressions, how to scaffold, how to address different levels or needs of student in the classroom. So we'll continue with that PD over our PD days throughout the school year. For Opportunity 2, in regards to best practice intervention, that's the one that I said is going to take a little bit longer because what we have to do for that is we really need to create a focus group. Our plan is to create a focus group that has a lot of different individuals on it, so that be counselors, administrators, intervention specialists, general education teachers, to really make sure that we're getting a holistic response from everyone on opportunities that we will have for scheduling at each of the different levels to address and look at our schedules within our buildings to see where we can get that extra time to do a little bit more direct instruction. What we heard from K-12 is the more that we can give that Tier 1 instruction to students with the general education teacher or in a CO-TOT setting, the better for them. So that's where we need to audit our opportunities in our current schedules to see when we can do, where we can do that. We're also planning to refine some of our expectations. Right now, especially in our high schools, we have tutoring periods, and we're really looking at IEP goals for the most part during those tutoring periods, but we want to make sure that we're refining the expectations of what should be worked on during those periods so that we're getting the best bang for our buck. With Opportunity 3, with designing a fair and efficient staffing model, I want to thank PEA and specifically Cory because there's been a lot of, and she works at Tollgate Elementary School, but there's been a lot of work around that workload calculator. We signed an MOU back in the spring in regards to the workload calculator, and we are at a point where we have something that we want to pilot, so we're going to start piloting in the fall for K through 4 MD and ID teachers to just look through that calculator, make sure we're getting all of the data that we want to address the needs in regards to staffing. We will, that calculator will be submitted to us by January for the teachers, at which point we'll review it, refine anything that needs to be refined in the process, and then determine next steps of moving forward with a different group. And then, bonus opportunities. So what we were told by K-12 was that they wanted us to really hone in on three specific opportunities, and so that's how we started with the three that we discussed before, but we know that the other things are very important. Human capital is very important, so that goes back to retaining, recruiting, keeping teachers here, and making sure that they have what they need, as well as making sure that we're building transparency and trust with the community and parents. And so, in order for us to do that, we are going to be holding quarterly, we're trying to plan for more frequently than quarterly, but we're specifically saying quarterly meetings for parents just so that they can understand the services that are provided in Pickerington and address other needs that they may want. So I will be sending out a survey to parents at the end of the week just to see what types of topics they might be interested in in regards to those resource series that we'll be providing, and then we will provide those at least quarterly, but hopefully bimonthly to monthly is what we're planning for. Some of the topics that could be included would be IEP basics, how to support students or set up homework environments in the home. We could have a myriad of different topics in those resource series. And it's going to be called Empower Ed, so come in in the fall. Look forward to those sessions. They will be virtual so that we can record those, upload those on the website, and be available to people that were not able to attend. Now, I'll take your questions, Mark, if you have any.
Actually, you only have a couple.
Okay.
Because most of them you answered.
Yeah.
Well, two, two things. One's just an administrative question. The slides that you went over are slightly different than.
They are slightly different, yes.
The first slide is not in there with.
It is not. I was reviewing it before the board meeting, and I was like, "What happened to my slide?" So it got deleted and then added back in for the Opportunity 3 to go over some of the things that we've already done.
Make sure it gets put in here then.
Yes, sir. We will do that.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I think otherwise, you answered the rest of my questions that I asked ahead of time.
Well, if you think of some later on.
The other question is the, really, it's not, I don't think it's yours, the human capital plan. I assume that's something that Heather, you're working on big-picture-wise for the whole district?
I had just one quick question. Can you tell us just some of the measures that were considered or currently like in the pilot workload calculator?
The one that happened in the spring or the one, or the pilot that'll happen this fall?
Just what measures you're using, like, in the calculator?
So in regards to the, in the actual calculator that we're piloting for this fall. So we'll look at different things. So we'll look at the caseloads of the student or of the teacher. So how many students per the operating standards are they servicing? We'll look at their disability category. We'll look at IEP minutes. How many minutes are they having to serve throughout the day? We'll also look at some of the things that are standard, so their planning periods and their lunches and making sure that that's all calculated into what is, what they're doing on a daily basis. We'll look at any related services that the students are provided because that all goes into the amount of service that the teacher has to do versus the para versus. We'll also look at staffing for each of those classrooms. So some, if we're looking at a MD classroom, we're going to have a teacher, two paras, and how does that go into the mix of the students that they're serving as well?
Just one quick follow-up. Will any of the data be helpful to address whether the amount of time in individual students' IEP is correct?
That's an IEP team decision, so we can talk about that. Once the teacher sends us the information in regards to their classroom, what we'll do is we'll look at their actual classroom roster. We'll look at each individual student. We may have some conversations about the actual student and their actual IEP minutes, but for the most part, there's always a coordinator in that meeting. And so they really hone in and have that conversation with the teams to make sure that those minutes are aligned. So for the most part, there's not a lot of questions about whether those minutes are aligned to the needs of the student, but if we needed to come back to that conversation, we could definitely do that.
Okay. Yeah, I just wondered if any of the data could also be used for that. Thanks.
Just a few comments. First, if we can address the elephant in the room here. If you can circumvent questions for Mr. Henson with your presentation. I feel like that in itself is a significant victory.
Charlie, you've only been here since July 7th.
I mean, we should all be impressed. But second, honestly, I'd like to thank you and Allison as well. This has been tireless effort, and I know you've both stepped into this position, and there's still a lot of pieces, parts that are sort of a work in progress, and you also have this hanging over your head. Now, we will never make excuses for performance that isn't excellent because that is our expectation, but I do have to say that special education is not just a Pickerington issue. This is an This is an issue across the nation. Now, I spoke with one of our new teachers the other night at new teacher dinner and he left his previous school district, which I won't mention, because they had essentially given up. They were not following any laws or any IEPs because they simply didn't have the staffing. So while we understand our expectations are excellent, we also have to acknowledge that we're in this with just about everybody else. It's similar to the folks that made the statement before about bus drivers. Those are the two pressing issues across public education on a national level. That said, the progress that you have made in such short time is nothing short of commendable. And I feel that we 100% have the right team in place and I think you helped the public and the board to see that tonight with your energy and your competence and your accuracy and the passion that you showed for the work that you're doing. So thank you.
Well, thank you. I don't think that we would have been able to do this without our team and actually like working with PEA has been a pleasure, right? Like we come to the table and we don't always agree, right? But we can always get to a resolve when we need to. And just our team, our coordinators, our psychs, honestly, we probably would be in a corner somewhere without them, so we wouldn't be able to do it without them at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next, we'll go to section D, which is the treasurer's report. Mr. Walsh, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Financials for July are, it'd be nice to report these financials every month. Big revenue month in July, about 30, almost $37 million, positive cash flow of $20 million. Ended with over $43 million. Property taxes came in to thank Fairfield County for their efforts in getting tax advances out to Pickerington. We used to ask, we used in past years would ask for it. Now we're getting it without having to ask, which is great. We also had just under $10 million of income tax came in in July. July's income tax is always the largest settlement of the year. Quarters going forward, there'll be about 40% less than what we received in July. So it's a good start for the month. The all cash balance was at 127 million in general fund and the tax collections had the influence to keep that number up, even though we're spending 7 million, almost 7.2 million in construction. Food service doesn't collect any money in the summertime because we're not feeding students. Termination benefits with our retirements, all of those were cash flow drains and still produced positive cash flows for all the months. With that being said, don't expect the same next month because it won't be there. At the bottom of the front page of the report, we've got a new graph there that talks about days cash. There's a request to provide such numbers on an ongoing basis, more relative for the fiscal year. So what you have down there is you have FY '25 ending cash of 52 days. Then we go to the end of July and it balloons to 96. Do not fall in love with that number because it won't be 96 at the end of August. We calculated this number by taking a rolling 12-month total expenditures. We looked at August of '24 through July of '25 and that number divided by 365 days produces a daily cost of $450,000 for Pickerington. Then we divide that number into our cash balance of 43 million and that's where you get the 96. The same will be said when we get to the end of calendar year '25, January of '26. Don't freak out if that number drops significantly because we're just on the beginning of collecting more property taxes. And so you'll see that number move. The last four columns on this chart are from the May forecast where FY '26 is estimated to end at 36 days, then 17 at 27, negative 8 at 28, and negative 37 at 29. We fully anticipate having a request from ODE to do a corrective action plan when we submit what will be our October forecast again, because now we're back to an October timeframe, at least for this year, and then next fall, I think is the end of August. So we did that back in '22, '23 with a corrective action plan because our third year out was negative. So we'll address that and keep the board apprised if and when that comes. That's where I'm going to put my money.
Want me to help you write that response to ODE?
Sure.
Okay.
We'll take your input because the board will have to approve it. So that's a new little graph. We replaced that. The old one was the cash balance that compared to forecast, May and November, and how those numbers moved. So we'll put, leave this one on there and see how, how it flows from month to month. Also on the 12-month look back, that's on the next to last page, that looks, compares July of '25 to July of '24 and what changed. It's easy to assume based on a growing school district, our expenses will increase and they did compared one year ago. All the categories increased as you would anticipate them to be. Revenue was better for this year compared to last year. Again, the property tax is driving that. If you just look at July itself compared and not taking into consideration the starting cash balance, it was positive by $2.5 million. Obviously, last year at this time, we had more cash than we did started the month with, so that's driving, overall, we're down 1.2 million when you compare ending of last year. One caution on the state aid, as you know, we've talked a little bit about the foundation program and what the new budget bill has in it. They continue to fund us based on the old parameters. If you would go out and look at a settlement sheet today, an ODE, they have our DPI money going up to 9.4 million. We know that's not going to happen because they are now doing a blended DPI calculation, taking your CEP population at 75% and then the 25% of your direct certification, that's going to be the makeup. So we anticipate in a neighborhood of a million and a half dollars less DPI. So some of our revenue is temporary, the increase. It will, it will decrease once we get to October, they'll start paying us based on that new budget, which is 90 days from when it was signed. But overall, July was good. I'll take any questions you have on the financial update. On page three, the district snapshot, we're going to start updating the student and staff numbers once we finally settle in and, and we're not bringing you so many new hires every month. So we have that on our radar to update when it's appropriate.
I have a question.
Yes.
The days cash chart at the bottom of page one, it shows 35 days of cash for fiscal '26. Our policy states 45.
Correct.
Does this, do these, and then that actually ties into what you just said about the new staff. Are we infusing our current staffing figures into our calculations?
Yes, the, from a forecast perspective, so if you're looking at July of 20, June of '26, that number would have whatever staff we identified during the development of the forecast. Subsequent to that, we've added a few people, the number escapes me, but it's going to be more than what we have in the May forecast. But again, there's a lot of assumptions. We have revenue assumptions. The July income tax was almost 6% higher than it was a year ago. We have increased income tax overall for the year. So maybe that July will help us overcome some of that staffing that is not in the May forecast, but.
On the staffing note, Charlie, if you could provide the board in the near term, a current net add of FTEs from last year to this year. I'd also appreciate some ongoing information to the board about our enrollment figures. Big numbers are fine by me, I don't need it by building or grade or what have you, but just to see what our, our growth is looking like as we get ready to launch school. I appreciate that. The, the last question I have is at the very bottom of page six. I look at, I like to look at the figure called fees paid to the city of Pickerington. To date, we're at $861,000. I like to round up to about a million bucks of the hundred and, or of the 90-some-odd that we collected from the taxpayers. Is, which build, are these fees comprehensive for the ELC or not, yeah, the ELC, Central Edition, New Junior High? What, what do these fees cover?
Yeah, those would relate to any of our properties that are under construction that are located in the city of Pickerington.
And do we feel that of those buildings, in particular, the addition to Central and the New Junior High, are we done with those fees to the city of Pickerington? Do we know or think or hope and pray?
Depending on timing from the city, who I believe uses an outside contractor to do some of their inspections, we're at the mercy of invoicing. So Central Edition, I'd say it's pretty close. The Junior High will probably have more, just from some of the inspections they do. It's going to drop off quite a bit because the things that they typically inspect are already, for the most part, done. Still have that lag, lag in invoicing.
But we would be aware, regardless of the lag, we'd be aware of the invoice.
Yeah, I don't think there are any large outstanding inspections or tap fees, things of that nature.
Or traffic study improvements. Do we have any insight as to where the city stands on the original $8 million that they wanted us to spend on traffic infrastructure improvements?
We're in a good place with the city at this point and don't anticipate that that type of number would be anywhere near we would, we would actually look at.
Hmm, okay, good.
I just have one, I guess, request, not question. But in November of '24, our five-year forecast that we submitted to the Department of Education, we showed we were 23 million in the positive cash balance at the end of '29. But I know our May of '25 reduced it to a negative 20,000. Can we just make sure that when you do the next report to us, we include in your assumptions to what happened to $42 million in less than a year for '29?
State funding.
Yeah, but I just, I think we need just a detailed assumption there so that we can all be on the same page of what's included in that new number.
Yeah, and I'll look at the November information I sent to the board. It probably spoke to that, the summary of the forecast, but we'll get you something.
Thanks.
Any other comments, questions? Is there a motion in a second?
Second.
Mr. Walsh, can you call the roll, please?
We'll call Mr. Henson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olshewski.
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp.
Yes.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes.
Mr. Postage.
Yes.
Item number two of the treasurer's agenda is the board will need to decide who they want to be their delegate and alternate delegate to attend the OSBA annual conference.
Well, considering there's only two people that won't be on a ballot in November, I would think you would have to have your, your person and your alternate be Mark and Kathy, whichever way they want to do that.
I have tenure, I'll be the delegate.
Sure.
All right.
Whatever you say, Kathy.
It sounds like there's a motion for Kathy and Mark is the alternate.
So moved.
Is there a second?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Mr. Walsh, can you call the roll, please?
We'll call Mrs. Neekamp.
Yes.
Mr. Postage.
Yes.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes.
Mrs. Olshewski.
Yes.
Mr. Henson.
Yes.
Okay, that moves us to section E, the consent agenda. Dr. Smilak, do you want to walk us through those?
I would be happy to, thank you, sir. First is administrative personnel. We have an administrative resignation from the gentleman listed there. We have administrator contract adjustments reflecting accurate start dates of new positions. We also have an administrator contract and you see the two names there. We then move into subject two, certified and licensed personnel. We have a retirement, actually resignation from a gentleman there. We have some personnel recommendations, actually four of them, that are reflecting population or enrollment growth. And Mrs. Olshewski, your, your ask is noted and we will absolutely have that. And actually, that will be a sort of a part of our regular routine from this point forward.
What was my ask? I forget.
You asked specifically how many FTEs we've added.
Oh, right. Yeah, that was a good question too, I thought.
And I look forward to honoring the request.
Thank you for your honor.
We have some extended days for the 2025, '26 school year. We have some activities in terms of training, crisis intervention prevention, project lead the way training for several individuals, PEA, teacher professional organization stipends for the following year, substitute teachers license or expansion, this is for the three year pre-service teacher permit. And we have substitute teachers license expansion as well for the non-bachelor substitute license. And then we have several substitute teachers and that's our certified and licensed personnel. We move then to support personnel and we have several resignations from the individuals listed. We have a correction from last agenda, July 28th agenda, in terms of employee transfer and contract approval. We have several contract adjustments. And we have some hires, some new folks that we're proud to bring on, support personnel recommendations. And similar to the certified, we have some classified then substitute support services recommendations. We are thrilled to be able to add to our battery of capable individuals who can step in at a moment's notice to keep our buildings operating as efficiently as they do. That takes us to subject four, which is personnel. We have some supplemental contracts and stipends. First, there's a resignation of the individual listed there of the supplemental position. And then we have a series of supplementals listed from our high schools and junior highs. And then again, we have some stipends listed that are supplemental stipends. And finally, we have some volunteer coaches and/or advisors. And we're thrilled that they are willing to donate their time to help our children. So we're grateful for their, their time. And that leaves us item five, which is the approval.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Walsh, can you call the roll, please?
We'll call Mrs. Neekamp.
Yes.
Mr. Henson.
Yes.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes.
Mrs. Olshewski.
Yes.
Mr. Postage.
Yes.
Next, we have section F, discussion action items. The first item is technology for Central Junior High. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want an understanding of where the monies are going to come from.
It's a great question. This, the, this will be paid for out of project dollars, the bond debt that was issued. We pulled the technology out of the project and considered it owner's, owner provided.
Right.
Might be able to get better pricing that way. And so typically you would find this in the CMR contract through a subcontractor, but.
Okay. But were you, but, okay, I got you.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Walsh, can you call the roll, please?
We'll call Mr. Henson.
Yes.
Mr. Postage.
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp.
Yes.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes.
Mrs. Olshewski.
Yes.
Um. The next item is number two, a motion to approve the resolution to authorize Meta Solutions to advertise and receive bids on behalf of the Pickerton Local School District Board of Education to purchase two Thomas 78 passenger school buses and one nine-passenger Ford Transit van.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Walsh, can you call the roll, please?
We'll call Mrs. Neekamp.
Yes.
Mr. Henson.
Yes.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes.
Mrs. Olshewski.
Yes.
Mr. Postage.
Yes.
Item number three is to approve a statement on board member. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Walsh, can you call the roll, please?
We'll call Mr. Henson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olshewski.
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp.
Abstain.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes.
Mr. Postage.
Yes.
Okay. The statement is as follows. The Pickerton School Board is aware that Vanessa Neekamp was recently charged with a criminal misdemeanor. It is our understanding the charge stems from matters not related to the business of the Pickerton Local School District or Mrs. Neekamp's role as a Board of Education member. Several of us have been asked what the school board intends to do to address this matter, understand that the Board of Education members are not employees of the school district. This means our school board lacks the authority to unilaterally remove or suspend a board member from their service on the school board. Further, we have been apprised that a misdemeanor criminal charge filed against Mrs. Neekamp is not an offense that would statutorily disqualify her from service on the board, even if she pled guilty to or is convicted of such offense. As such, our ability under the law to address this matter is limited. All board members are bound by the Code of Ethics found in Policy 0123, Code of Ethics, Code of Conduct. Should the board find Mrs. Neekamp violated this code, we may address her conduct through a formal resolution of censure. The next section is section G, information only, and that is the Plan for Progress. Dr. Smilak, do you have anything?
I do, Mr. Lopez. And first, I'd like to explain that we're going to move past this portion of the agenda with tonight sort of being the landing place, being that the Plan for Progress was actually formed in 2019. And quite frankly, when you ask most people about the Plan for Progress, you get sort of a blank stare. But I did want to give it its due diligence in terms of some research, and that research took the form of both town hall meetings this spring, as well as a survey that was posted online, that was emailed to our parents, to our teachers. And I just wanted to give the board sort of some feedback in terms of what we heard, in terms of where we land with academic excellence and efficient operations. And so you have that in front of you. This is also posted to our website as well on the news section, so folks can access this. Just in terms of highlights, academic excellence and efficient operations rated really above the middle point. So the middle point would have been essentially 2.5. We asked folks to rate from a scale of one to five what they thought, how we were performing within each of those elements. We also asked about modern facilities. I've really separated that out and really don't plan to speak about it at this point because it's really just sort of parked for now. I mean, we have a lot of work to do in terms of our academic excellence efforts and our efficient operations, and anything else would require another master planning session, and those are really parked. Those are in-the-distance scenarios. So I did want to highlight that it's very difficult to read through the trends and the commonalities of folks' comments without coming back to the same conclusion that we all espoused. And I understand that, you know, we didn't vote to go forward with a levy proposal, but even in that, you know, the conversation was certainly that we acknowledged, the board acknowledged, the need, just didn't maybe feel it was the right time or the right number. And so I think it's incumbent upon all of us to continue to educate the community in terms of our need. One of the comments that you continually hear is that we have been efficient, but just as one example of what we've said, and again, these are commonalities, these are trends, but our building administrators indicate that efficiency has gone too far, leading to underpreparateness and inaction. We also see from parents, actually, I'm sorry, this is from our staff members, "Efficiency focus is seen as excessive, causing unsustainable workloads." So we have to continue to help people to understand that we have been efficient, and that's a strength, and yet we have reached a breaking point, and we have to continue to use that same terminology. And I think breaking point was not my terminology, it's something that really came to us through our town hall meetings, because that's where we're at. And we will really, again, wrap up the Plan for Progress with this report. And again, this is accessible online. But I think that, you know, from this point forward, I think we need to continue to illustrate where we are lean. And so we didn't want to do it for tonight because we actually just added a couple of sections within the last week to bring some numbers down at Heritage. There was another section, and the location is escaping me right now, but we will get to the board, you know, our average class sizes. The FTE question is well taken, the enrollment is well taken. And then it's all of our job to continue to make sure that folks understand it's great that we've lasted since 2011 with no, you know, new money in terms of property taxes, income tax has been stable at the 1%, but at what cost? And at some point, there does become a cost, and we really believe that we are rapidly approaching where we start to have some detriments to that efficiency. And so I present this to you tonight for your own, you know, purview. We are also using, you know, I certainly referenced the financial elements, but there are certainly other elements in here where folks have given us some really good places to look in terms of what we need to improve. I do want to point out that only one person emerged from my two times putting this through ChatGPT to say, summarize this information, please, and that was John Walsh. Congratulations to John for being recognized by building administrators for strong communication. So should take a little bit of solace in that, Mr. Walsh. We actually use this as well, just, you know, we always, anything we aim, anything we do, we aim to make sure that it's not just an exercise in, you know, futility. I mean, that we come back and we look at these things. So this was the beginning of our administrative welcome-back meeting. So we looked through this, and we looked for commonalities and helped to drive some behaviors that we're going to focus on as a leadership team, and we'll apprise you of those as well at the next board meeting.
Thank you.
You have a lot of numbers in here. I just want to make sure I understand them. So the numbers next to the category are the number of survey respondents?
That's correct. So, you know, at the top, district office administrators, we had 10 that completed the survey.
Got to get on them.
Building administrators, 17, teachers and staff, 90, parents, 58.
And then the numbers after academic excellence and efficient operations within each of those categories, is that a score?
That was the average rating from a scale of one to five. That's correct.
Okay.
And then beyond that is just where we, again, summarized the qualitative input.
And you said this information is going to be available online?
It already is. We, Ms. Bryant, added it to our website right before our meeting.
Ruby, thanks.
All right. Thank you. Next is number two, which is trips. The Pickerton High School North Boys Golf Team will be attending a tournament August 24th and 25th at Congress Lake Club. We wish them the best of luck there. Section three is camps. Pickerton High School Central will host the Junior Tigers Cross Country Camp that will begin Sundays and Wednesdays, beginning August 22nd, and that is being sponsored by the Pickerton Central Cross Country Boosters. Also, the Pickerton High School Central Tiger Cheer Camp for students grades one through six will be held August 16th and 30th at the Field House at Central, and that is being sponsored by the PCABC Spirit Club. Next, we have section eight, comments, questions. Any public comments, questions about anything that was on the agenda this evening? Any board member comments, questions?
I do. Welcome back, everybody. As we begin the 24 or 25-26 school year, I want to thank the staff for its preparation and patience. The weeks prior to the start of a new school year are always frenetic, but from my perspective, I have seen a ton of work being done by all levels of staff to welcome our students. This is going to be an exciting year for Pickerton Schools. New buildings, new building additions, freshly waxed floors, sharpened pencils, fold toilet paper dispensers, new faces, new athletic teams, lots of new, and lots of comfort from the return of what I call normalcy. As we learned this morning at convocation, which I thought was great, by the way, greatness together is what it's all about this school year. However, I would be remiss not to acknowledge that this school year will bring with it a significant number of challenges. Funding, large class sizes, growing overall enrollment, lack of space, three negotiation cycles, state and federal nonsense, nonsense. This list is rather extensive, which is why I am grateful for the leadership that is currently in place in our district. Not to sound trite, but I believe that we all wear a leadership hat. From the superintendent to the classroom instructor, from the building principal to the head custodian, from a union president to paraprofessionals, each of us is a leader in the role in which we were hired and which we were called, or in the role to which we were elected. Elected leaders are unique in their roles. In my opinion, we exist first and foremost to represent and serve the people who elect us, but also to make decisions that protect and elevate the people who elect us. In the school board world, the highest priority for the five of us sitting at this table is to serve our students, our staff, the district as a whole. Sometimes the decisions we make do not sit well with the individual community members, but we are charged with making and explaining those hard decisions because they are in the best interests of our students. Elected leaders should lead by example. They should be held to a higher standard than others. They should be others-focused and not self-centered. And when the actions of the elected leader get in the way of both the work this individual was elected to do and the organization this individual was elected to lead and serve, that individual should place the organization first and step aside. Vanessa Neekamp is currently embroiled in litigation that, while it does not directly involve Pickerton Schools, it does affect her ability to fulfill her leadership role and responsibilities within Pickerton Schools. And those are to lead by example, to be held to a higher standard, and to put others first. Therefore, I believe the right and proper decision for Mrs. Neekamp is to resign her board position immediately.
Well, I will comment. Last I knew, in America, you were innocent until proven guilty. And so I assert that right as well. On the advice of legal counsel, I can't say much more to that fact, but as soon as we are able to make a statement, we absolutely will.
Any other board comments? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Walsh, can you call the roll, please?
We'll call Mrs. Olshewski.
Yes.
Mr. Postage.
Yes.
Mrs. Neekamp.
Yes.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes.
Mr. Henson.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. We will be back in two weeks at the same time. Thank you.